Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call. Yeah, Dennis, could you be where flag bearer there?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening there, folks. Okay, we have a lot of business to take care of tonight. We have two public comments, one at the beginning and one at the end. So please refrain any comments until those sections, okay? And then we'll consider what we've talked about. All right. Okay, I have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five additions to the agenda. J is approved King &amp; King audit fees. K is Golden Hawk appraisal. L is window repair. M is garbage receptacle replacement. And N is high-tech Microsoft 360. Oh, sorry about that. M is garbage receptacle replacement. Okay. Oh yeah, another thing is when I read the packages, I may have missed the... I missed the first page for the minutes. Oh, good. Now, there was three pages to the minutes. I clearly did not have the first page rather than the... Okay, any questions regarding the agenda? Or anything on the... Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consultation as presented with the additions to the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion here to approve the consultation agenda. Any support? Okay, we have motion, support. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Citizens comment. This is where people do talk now. Do you have a free change?
I have something I would like to bring up.
Sure.
Kind of everybody knows that my farm burnt to the ground.
Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that, Bob. That's terrible.
Well, Jerry and I have been wanting to do this for a while, but this is kind of getting us going even faster yet. But we would like to get those corners taken back, get the round part taken off. And that's what we've got there. We got a copy of the library page and all of that for the easements were taken in 1929.
Really?
You had it long enough. I'll run it back. And I'll give you the 50 bucks for it.
Well, well, first of all, yeah, this is a church road to county road. I will talk to Mr. Bill Hazelton. He's the director of the road commission to start to talk about this. And now with the, you know, with the agreement coming to an end, I think they're kind of having...
Well, actually, there's no agreement. There's no end to it. It doesn't have a 100-year...
No.
No, it doesn't say that in the easement.
It doesn't. So you're like Guinness. You have the property for like a thousand years.
I don't think it matters. It's just that, you know, that road has served no purpose at all. It was taken for logging. They're not logging anymore.
My grandfather owned a farm where I lived, and a farm across the road where last lady lives. And he had a sawmill. And back then, they didn't have tractors. They had horses to haul the logs. And they could only haul them in the winter on a sleigh. And they couldn't make the turn square corner. So he took the fence down and let them go around there. The county afterwards liked the idea and they...
So they took my side too.
And then they talked to Mr. Graham, and he also took the $500 or whatever it was.
50 bucks.
And that's how them curves got there.
Yeah, there's...
And there's only one way. You can only come on from my way. You can only go to the east from the south.
Yeah, but why do they go back and forth either way?
Oh, yeah.
They don't care if people break the law all the time.
Oh, yeah, absolutely on both sides.
In that area out there, that little triangle is nothing more than the same haven for people that want to tear it up.
There's a precedence. Right there, Springborn-Palm Road, they used to have the exact same thing.
Yeah.
They took those out sometime in the early 90s.
Oh, okay. I thought I'd remember seeing them before. So that's taking me back.
You can still see the remnants of the west side of the north side. And so...
I just drove over there and I'd be darned if I saw.
Yeah, look at the north side. Yeah.
I'd be done.
Yeah.
It only comes off one way.
Yeah, they used to go both ways when they moved that school.
Right.
But I will talk to Mr. Hazelton, you know...
Doesn't a township pay for the maintenance of that road?
Well, that's Church Road right there, so that's a...
Not church. No, that's...
Yeah.
So it's costing the township money to gravel it, cut the lawn, because he's not cutting the grass anymore.
Well, he's gonna break my tractor.
Well, let me talk to Mr. Hazelton. I know the big thing will be ripping out the old culvert there. You know, they have to widen it.
That's another thing. Those culverts, the ditching in there, I think is causing the flooding. That local flooding that goes down there, you've got quite a few people that complain about that.
Water comes from this way.
But to be on the same...
Water only runs south of this.
But to be on the fair side, the county has been doing a lot of ditching on the west side of Church Road.
Right, but the ditching itself would not take care of what that those curves have done. Is that completely blocked off the ditches where the water doesn't run?
Well, I'll talk, I'll give matter factors of a few different matters I got to talk to Mr. Hazelton about. And if he didn't get back to me today...
I think the feds have been giving a lot of money for road purging, right? Isn't it about time we got a little bit of that?
Well, we are.
Good.
The Palm Road Bridge is being redone by that.
I just saw that. I just go up there and saw the people...
That's Department of Michigan, Department of Michigan Transportation project. And that's part of that. That was identified by the state as a good candidate for that. But let me talk to them.
How long you figure we'll get some kind of an information, maybe an answer back?
Well, it may not happen this year, but probably we'll see about next year.
Well, here's what I'm thinking. I would like to do something with that barn just for a moment. And I'd like to have that corner back before I start doing anything.
Right, right.
So if it can be sped along a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, that was terrible what happened.
Yeah, I'll have to talk to them about that.
Everything's gone, yeah. My tractor, my truck, my Corvette.
You know how the first...
Your Corvette. Yeah, that's probably what started the dark.
Oh, no. What a shame.
Okay. Yeah, Jerry and Jim, well, let me call tomorrow and we'll get on it, so...
I appreciate it. And Jerry's not, he says he's not going to be around much longer.
Well, we'll see about that.
Yeah, that's probably right.
Okay, anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay. Anyone else? Yeah. Anything, anyone else have public comments right now? Okay, all right, moving on. We don't have Lauren Roche from Consumer's Energy, the person she was going to bring to talk about green technology. So we're next going to be up on the agenda is Nancy Windsor, St. Clair County Parks and Recreation.
Hi, Nancy. I appreciate you, Joe. Oh, I didn't know if she'd stand here or...
Oh, yeah, no, come up here because we're... You want me to be disembodied voice.
Well, as Joe said, my name is Nancy Windsor. I'm from County Parks. And again, thank you for having me. I just wanted to kind of come here today to remind everyone to vote our religious coming up again here August 2nd. And just to kind of thank you everyone for other support in the past, you know, we have seven parks, over a thousand square meters of parkland throughout the county. And also 25% that goes back to each one of the communities. We've been working hard this year to kind of work a little bit more with the townships. And Joe is one of the few that have been trying to, we've been trying to help get some more grant money from the state to come to some of the smaller townships and counties in the county, because sometimes I think they miss out. So Joe, thank you for already filling out the grant form and getting things rolling there. But so that's kind of our focus is to try to think of different, not only our, you know, I think our parks are very lucky to have the parks that we have in our park system. And, you know, I've only been in this job for a year, but I've been with the city of Portland for like 30 years. And I didn't even realize the amount, I mean, I knew all the perks we had, but until you really start to see what's in them. We are very fortunate in the county to have the different perks that we do have. And we have a new disc golf course that's at Columbus now, that new BMX that's at Woodson now. Also, the brand new playground that'll be opening up at Goodell's. Obviously, like I said, lots of great things happening in the county, also at the different townships and city levels as well. So I think we're very fortunate in that way. So again, I just came out here to kind of introduce myself, remind everyone if they can remember to vote on the second. And let us continue to be, you know, that help that we can on grants coming up.
You know, we're developing base one on our park for recreational, being on a recreational passport grant. And I'm going to be talking about a little bit later, but if I could get, we're going to, the only pavement we're going to have right now is the April and Old Pretmore Highway where the handicap parking is in the sidewalks. If I could get funding to pave the driveway and the lot entirely, the gravel that's going to be placed in there is going to be, is designed as base for paving.
Okay.
So if we get that...
Do we know how much it is to start?
I have, I put on there to your turn.
Okay.
I'll have to get called.
So the meeting that we're having, and I know you've already been a cat take, where there is, there is, like you were saying, some ARP money out there right now in what's called Spark through the state of Michigan. And we've been pushing there because a lot of times the bigger cities kind of tend to suck up a lot of that money and leaves some of the smaller areas out. We're trying to push to get projects, like you're saying, on that list, because there is no match money to it. So it kind of works out nice, but so we're going to try to help put together comprehensive packages, counties, so...
And what's so nice about our park, okay, it's going to have access on Bell River. And the hope is to have a water trail from Memphis to Marin City. And two, they have one group there in the county that's talking about a trail along Division Road, Pretmore Highway from Richmond to St. Clair.
Bridgeway?
Right.
Yeah.
The link up, the McComb Orchard Trail to Bridgeway. If that happens, our park is one place where those two come together, the water trail and land.
How much of that, so is that in Castro, the connector or no?
What's that?
Is the connector between Orchard in Castro?
Yeah, because you're talking about...
How long is that, do you know?
It's, I don't know, maybe about 12 miles.
Yeah, so you St. Clair to Richmond, that's 11, 12, something.
The easement on Division Road, Pretmore Highway is pretty wide.
Okay.
The big problem is, is getting through the city of Richmond from where the McComb Orchard Trail ends right there at Main Street and Division Road.
Exactly.
Down further on, past the city limits, that's going to be the challenging part for the city. But they're looking at a different fund, I forget what group, you and I went to that, but...
Wilson Foundation?
Yeah, Wilson Foundation and other groups to get funding for this trail to connect.
Is it actually in McComb or St. Clair County?
It's in both.
Both, right.
More mall in St. Clair County than McComb.
That probably would be a good Wilson grant, if you want to talk about that a little bit more. You know, when we come on the 20th, maybe we can kind of help us on that as well.
By the way, we want to fund the water trail. If Wilson could get them to fund water trails, water trails, it would be a wonderful trail for Memphis.
You mean on the river? And what funding money for that, like the...
Clearly, logs, log channels.
Okay.
Very expensive and kind of risky.
Yeah, and also two, we're a township for one time at the Goodell's Park. And you were talking, they had a attorney from you about, he was talking about along the Great Lakes, public access. And he says anything from the high watermark to the waterline is considered public domain. And I said, what about along Michigan's rivers? What about the edge? And he said, I don't know. And I said, well, it has to be determined by a court. He goes, mostly. So there is...
Yeah, I know the answer to that.
Yeah, and that's where, I mean, people could portage over low jams, but when the portage becomes trespassing, because most of the rivers go private property and that, so...
I do think that the trail to McComb and St. Clair, and we could come up with a plan on that, that would have some weight with them.
Clearly, the coordination of governance and...
So that's where the problems met?
They love it to get, you know, to fund it sort of coordination from different communities.
And the water, they haven't really dabbled in the water piece that much yet. I'm on their task force in Detroit, and so we kind of hear a lot of what they're funding. And I've not heard a lot on the water trail, so...
By the way, you have a wonderful insight.
Oh, thank you.
This is really informative.
Thank you, thank you. Got to do one coming up here soon, so, so thank you.
But support each, every four years have been going up for the parks, hasn't it?
As far as the mileage rate, so the mileage has never been raised since, you mean like as far as like people voting assets?
Yes.
Okay, yes, it has. And during COVID, we saw quite a good amount of people that have come to the park. So, I mean, people are really using the parks even more than ever.
At first I heard it was mostly along the river, those communities voted for it. And down the western, western part of the communities, they didn't support it too much. But then you're saying, I remember Mark was saying that the support for it now has been going up in the western townships and communities.
I think people are using it more than, you know...
Well, I think this got a renewal.
Yes. And you brought up a good point. This is a renewal to just kind of let everyone know it's, they're not increasing, it's staying the same, so... And I did bring some mileage back sheets that I'll leave here if that's okay. And just kind of tell us like how much it is and what, you know, all the different things that we've done this year.
And just leave them on the back table.
Okay, well, I appreciate you guys having me today.
Yep, and I'll be there at that meeting.
Yes, and if we can be of any resource, please continue to let us know.
Okay, now I will get a contract to look and give us a rough estimate on how much it'll be.
Yes.
And I'll be at that meeting to see if we can handle money.
Okay.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
You can lock that door.
This one?
Okay.
Okay, the next thing, the correspondent, St. Clair County 4-H and Youth Fair. It's going to be July 18th and 23rd. How many people are familiar to go up to that? It's a great, it's a traditional country fair, and it's mostly for the kids. Yeah, it's an excellent, our deputy treasurer, she's involved, heavily involved with the 4-H up there. And if you have never been to it, I highly encourage you to attend. It's a wonderful event. Any questions? Okay. New business audit report from King &amp; King. CPA, I'll see.
Good evening, everybody. For those that don't know me or remember me, my name is Wes Messing. I'm a CPA with King &amp; King CPAs. We've come out about a month ago and conducted the annual audit for the township. We've come every year as required by the state. So overall, I want to thank the elected officials for all their help for the day that we're here doing our fieldwork. And we get all of our questions answered and help us have a successful day and a good audit for the township. And everything that you guys use throughout the year to get ready for that day. So you guys have a good staff here. It's really helpful for us.
Thank you.
I've provided kind of a supplemental report to our audit report. It's kind of a talking point for this meeting. If you can reference that, it has a few columns on it, a couple of years of information on it. Try to do this rather than just looking at the audit report, because this gives us multiple years of information where the audit report just has one year. So this helps us kind of see some trends and kind of maybe identify if there's anything we need to watch out for in the township financially. If anybody has any questions, just feel free to let me know. I'll talk about it briefly and then we'll kind of wrap up. So you can see the first section is a general fund. General fund has cash of about $1.5 million with also some receivables and liabilities as well. But a fund balance also about $1.5 million. For a township of this size, it's a very healthy fund balance. We have, so...
What would you say, to say above a million would be good for us or...
I think at a minimum for a township your size, you probably want to have a $600,000 to $700,000 fund balance minimum. So you guys are certainly above the minimum.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So you can see kind of the last four years, our fund balance has increased over the last four years. So we're continually or regularly putting a little bit of money away every year. So that's certainly increasing the health of the township. Our revenue section kind of moving down the page, our property taxes, those have gone up the last four years as the taxable values are still recovering from '07 and '08. And we've had quite an uptick in building activity the last five plus years. Even this year, you can see there your licensing permits and fees doubled this year, which includes building permits. Very high increase in activity of building in the township. So that will continue to contribute to the tax base of the township and hopefully then add to our tax revenues. We're seeing that along amongst most of the townships that we audit, the tax base is still increasing, so that's good to see. The next line, intergovernmental revenues, that would be your state revenue sharing from the state of Michigan. A little bit of a hiccup in 2021, it dropped just slightly. That was because of COVID. But it has come right back up and continued on the trend that it was before of increasing, with a nice increase this fiscal year. And the next line, as I mentioned already, our building activity has increased quite a bit in the township. This year, down a little bit further is grant proceeds. That would be the ARCA money that the township received and spent on what we are standing in on and above. The nice renovation to our hall and living room. The next section, general fund expenses, general government and public safety expenses. You can see those are slightly increasing annually. Everybody's costs are going up, so you kind of see that. Thankfully, we have increasing revenues that are able to cover those costs. Public works would be roads and drains. That kind of fluctuates every year, just depending on the road work that the township does. It's staying fairly consistent in that 2 to 250 range. And then capital outlay this year would be the hall renovation and then also some software for update there. So overall, this year, we added about $190,000 for a fund for the future. Any questions on that? Our park fund, the next section, we have a fund balance of around $400,000. As we just discussed, that's the mileage money from the park, county park department, plus any other grants and proceeds that have gone into that fund over the years. So that money is restricted on used forest township parks. So all these projects that you guys are talking about coming up, we have some money available for that. Very healthy fund balance in that fund for the township. And then the last one, the liquor law enforcement, kind of breaking even there, adding a little bit, you know, about $15,000. That's, that money is restricted to use towards enforcement of liquor licenses and that kind of thing. Questions on any of that? We again appreciate the work with the township. We've had a longstanding relationship and look forward to continuing that into the future. We have a contract with the township, I think, for one more year, so I'll certainly see you again next year and hopefully beyond that as well.
Now, did you see any areas of improvement that we can do better?
Yeah, we've talked about that with the elected officials kind of along the way. I will say overall, everything in the township from a financial and bookkeeping standpoint is going very well. You've got one of the best treasurers in the county and have an upcoming clerk that's been here a few years and is getting her feet wet with all of it. She's doing a very good job for the township. Few things with building and performance bonds that we're continually working to try to improve to make sure that we're tracking those performance bonds that are in the township for the money that we're holding for people, for projects that are outstanding. Making sure that we're following up with those. Or having some sort of a policy that if the project goes too long, that we forfeit those and kind of move on.
Yeah, no, they're pretty good at letting us know. I mean, if you come here in November, we always have a list of one for them.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good policy for the township. We have some that can inspire a lot of control and lose track of it, and we don't know who the money you got, so...
Building department, they're pretty good at keeping track. Does the board have any questions?
Appreciate it again. Thank you. Have a lovely evening to everyone tonight, so we're asking you to...
Enjoy.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Have a nice rest of your night.
Thank you, see you in a care.
All right. Okay, 2B. We have the approved by general property taxes for an amount of $1,892.41.
Make motion to pay the mice and road property taxes by 14th of September.
Okay, we have a motion support to pay the property tax on our mice and road property for $1,892.41. Any further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All roll call votes. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
I said, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Silver, yes.
Okay, thank you for reminding. Okay. 2C, approve mileage rate increase. Okay. Okay, right now, it will be, for about six months, the point going to the standard mileage rate, the business travel will be 62.5 cents per mile. Up four cents from the way effective at the start of the year. New rate for deductible medical or moving expenses will be 22 cents remainder of 2022. Up four cents from the way effective at the start of the year. These new rates come effective the 1st of July, 2022. Okay, I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the mileage reimbursement to 62.5 cents per mile.
Do I have support for that?
Right.
Okay, we have a motion and support to approve the mileage reimbursement for 62.5 cents per mile.
I'm going to answer that. It's effective today. We don't have to go back to July first because we've already paid mileage out. And it's probably not worth the time to go again.
All right, we have a modification to make it effective today. Are you agree with that?
I agree with that.
Okay. All in favor of this? Oh, roll call? Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Because it's yes.
Stevens, yes.
Silver, yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, approve what your worker pay increase. Then we didn't talk about this.
Yes, our election inspectors are key to running our elections. We can't do it without them. And with COVID, we saw a lot of people, especially some of the older people that help us, are afraid to come back or don't want to come back because of, you know, COVID and whatnot. So we're having a hard time finding election inspectors. They do, they work from 6:30 a.m. until we're done. Last year, or 2020, I could not get home until 2:30 in the morning. So it's a long day. And right now, we're paying $10 an hour, and I'm asking we increase it to 13, which, I mean, you can go to McDonald's and get a job for $15 an hour starting out, so... And our chair people who are responsible for running the computers and basically taking care of the precincts. They are currently getting $13 an hour, and I'm asking to increase it to 15. And we also have, it's usually the chair people that are on our receiving board, which at the end of the night go through and check to make sure. They have like a checklist to make sure like all this stuff is where it needs to be. make sure like all the stuff is where it needs to go. And we have different envelopes we have to send to the county to wherever. So I'm asking for them to get an additional twenty dollars for the election on top of their pay for that.
All right, we have this proposal there.
And I'll make a motion. Jennifer wants to repeat the prices, she can. If not, I don't know what the prices that Jennifer is asking to give our hardworking, long-lasting election workers a pay increase for twenty twenty-two.
Support. Okay, we have a motion support to increase the wages of our election inspectors. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion, five yeses, motion carries. Okay. Item E, approve of twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two Parks and Rec local mileage distribution of twenty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. This is.
I make a motion. This money is distributed to us from St. Clair County Parks and Recreation. It's the village that we collect countywide, and this is our portion based on population. It's going up this year, it's quite a bit more than last year. So it is twenty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars that will go into our Parks and Rec fund as soon as you sign the form and we send it in.
Can you make the motion? Okay. We have a motion support to approve the two thousand twenty-two Parks and Rec local mileage distribution for twenty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Do you roll call vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay. Our hardworking clerk's office, once they get the elections done, their next project they're going to turn to is looking for the cemetery. They have to get a handle on the records down there that hasn't been done in decades.
So don't die yet.
I mean, we're selling plots out of, I mean, it's one of the very death of the cemetery. But we need to get a handle on this and there's a conference that these places would like to attend. It's called the Michigan Association Municipal Cemeteries. Okay, where they're going to get educated on all matters of the cemetery and they're like.
We actually, it was really interesting, one of the conferences in Fairford City, there was different classes and they took the one on the cemetery and the lady, it's going to be, yeah, this conference, it was an hour and a half class and I have pages of notes, pages and pages of, it's going to be a big project.
It was actually really interesting.
Do you have any concept at this point, given the land that we have and as we own the land dedicated to the cemetery? How many plots do we have speaking up, you know? And so while we're trying to figure out how many plots we have, perhaps we could also get together with the folks at St. Paul's or St. Justin's to talk about a future, what do you say, cullumbarium? When we run out of land, because we're going to run out of land.
There, yeah, there's actually one of the properties on Ediary Road, a joint with cemeteries that, you know, I told the ladies there, we ought to look into if it ever went down to sale, we ought to. It's the first house on Ediary Road when you pull off Palms under.
Oh, yeah, uh huh.
Yeah. See, you know.
But I mean, the future, because so many cemeteries now are going to the cullumbarium.
Or we can pop for someone else that we can expand. We also thought about cremation, cremation burial where the old shi'us to be, where we ask that you can support people. A lot of people get cremated now, so.
So there's a lot to learn. So I would make a motion that these two ladies represent us and go to the Michigan Association of Municipal Cemeteries Conference.
You're asking for a hundred thirty-nine?
That's just for the conference, so we'll need to analyze.
All right, so we'll know that amount after. Okay, so we're just going to vote on approval. So, all right, are you making a motion?
I did. I support the vote.
Okay.
Yeah, I just think it's great. Officers are getting work.
Yeah.
First time in a really long time. I really do.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and support to send Jennifer Anderson, quote Jennifer Anderson, Deputy Clerk Vicki Holm, to the Michigan Association Municipal Cemetery Conference August seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, and fifteenth. Okay. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, five yeses, motion carries. Okay. Finally, I found, it literally dropped into my lap, I've been for the last two years, two and a half years, we haven't had a recording secretary. And I got a letter from Ms. Rebecca Haynes, who used to be the deputy clerk of Palm, I mean, St. Pete Beach, Florida. And she retired and moved up here. You should, I asked her, you should, it's the other way around, but she said she can't afford to live in the city. She served for nearly twenty-some odd years. And so she moved up here, she has family up here, and she was looking for extra stuff to do. And I said, yes, I do. I have a job. I need a recording secretary for the planning commission. Back, we got sued, the planning commission, back in early two thousands, and the judge ruled on our side, and then we made a trial, it was just up in interior. But the judge chided us on our minutes. So he recommended we had a recording secretary at the planning commission, that's all they do is record the minutes. And we have a planning commission secretary, but they're responsible for putting together the agenda. For the last couple of years, we haven't had one, I'm searching, I got some people that offer, but it's way beyond our expenses. So Ms. Haynes said she is willing to try and that's all I ask. And I'm asking for seventy dollars for me because of her professional background, her experience in this. I think she's going to be wonderful. She lives in Eldenack right now? And do you have a requirement right now that minutes, whether Brenda has been there?
If I'm not mistaken, they have to be available within five days.
Yeah.
To the public. Five days to the public. And after they've been approved, eight days.
All right. So, yeah, that's where we have to improve on, so. She's willing to start in August, and I'm asking for seventy dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Are missing.
Dan, make a motion.
So. I'll support it. Because we would have supported it.
Yeah. And I told her that her last name might be a white Christmas because the Haynes. All right. All right, okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Stevens, yes. Okay, thank the five yeses, and I will call Rebecca tomorrow and tell her that she is hired for the day. Okay.
So I don't think that needs to be too separate.
No, it doesn't. We got to be set seventy dollars.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's compensation, so I don't think we need to do a G and H. You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
They already agreed on the price.
If you're hungry, you're.
No, okay, no, this is a Denver.
It's a Denver.
Yeah, Denver thing.
Oh, okay.
Let me explain that.
Oh, that was the Dan Hill one, sorry. My bad.
Okay. The next one is on there, our current secretary, Dan Hill, is also doing the recording secretary. Beforehand, we did that, when we had the secretary, we would always pay him more for doing the minutes on that. And he's did it for four months and he'll do it this month. And I want it, planning commissioners get thirty dollars for me, thirty dollars and some change for me. I would like to give him twenty dollars to cover those months that he was recording. So that'd be, you know, four months at eighty dollars. Okay. All right. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any support? We have a motion support to compensate Dan Hill for being the recording secretary for the last four months. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, five yeses, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Our next one, our network computer. Last meeting, I said I was going to turn it over to our attorney, have her write a letter. Well, I talked to our legal counsel, Chris Anderson, and she said I should write a letter to be very polite and to show that network computers may have led to the hack of all the portals. So I did so, I sent the verbiage to Chris Anderson, have her, she made some modifications. Brenda made some modifications on some of the words. She, what, twenty-two years as a legal secretary? So that was, both ladies helped me out, and I sent it certified, met on first-class mail out there. He responded, you can see the letter that I wrote, and the second letter that he wrote that, it's almost too, yeah, it's almost seemed like in a way there's somewhat amity, but I wanted to get your input, the board's input on our next steps.
My, I'm going to tell you my input. When he says emailing me your offer on Monday, my offer is, I'm going to send him a bill for all the expenses that we've had to incur for the, you know, for the lack of support and whatnot. So my, I don't think we should pay them anything. We paid them the one invoice that they paid us, and that was, the two invoices, the one that we paid was what, nineteen hundred or?
Yeah, almost two thousand.
The description on the invoices were pretty much exactly the same with that one and the eighteen thousand.
Plus their pro-weaponship.
Yes. I mean, even today, with the computers being down, it's because the battery backup that we had was not a, it was a rebuilt battery backup, which we did not know we were getting rebuilt stuff. And it blew out and we were out of internet for what, three hours between yesterday and today? We had stuff, we had election stuff to do, they have tax stuff to do, there was building stuff to do, and you couldn't do it. So, and three hours, you know, and people are trying to get through. So that's my opinion.
I think that it's, you're very good, send them an advisement of all of the expenses that have been incurred as a result of their failures and also their failure to inform us of it. They were really providing for us, which was not what we expected.
No, because we just got, we got a new computer for Katie. We ordered a new computer. The new IT company said it's twelve years old.
See how they respond. I hope it's a good place to start now, but they really do owe us, whether we're off that or not, I don't know.
I would say that we just come back with saying that we're paymentful and then they decide to push it further and then we say, hey, we're going to know you now.
Okay. All right.
That's, that's.
Okay.
To show on the other foot.
I agree. Let it go.
It's really crossed, it's crossed a lot of grief from Bobby and a lot of everybody.
We were shut down for two or three weeks. We were shut down for three weeks.
It was grief, everybody who tried to fix it.
Their residents couldn't get any?
Okay, let me, I, what I'll give you, I'm going to consult Chris Anderson and talk to her about what, um, things you say.
You want me to be in, or me and Colleen or whatever to be in?
Okay. And we will, circle it out together. All right. Okay, move it on. All right. Okay, King and King Audit, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the invoice for seven thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that's for audit of the general fund, the park fund, the liquor fund, and doing the three reports that are required.
Okay, we have a motion support to pay the bill for the King and Kaye Audit Report. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, five yeses, motion carries. All right. Okay, is Golden Hawk appraisal. Okay, Golden Hawk is, Golden Hawk, oh, of course, is challenging their tax bill. Just like we did with Michigan Meadows, we have to get an appraisal. Our assessor, Shelley Baummeister, says we have to get one there from the Golden Hawk. She says the one from Michigan Meadows cost two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Golden Hawk's a much larger facility, so the cost of appraisal is going to be higher. I asked Shelley how much would be estimated to be. Just maybe the cost would be around three thousand dollars.
But it's necessary.
Yeah.
We have to, we have to set a base price. And if the township is too high in the assessment, we need to negotiate that. We need to look at it fairly because that will be the starting point from here on out. Just like any other sale, your taxable becomes your assessed value, so we'll be starting. And hopefully, you know, we'll, it takes a lot to get that assessment of their whole property. But it really, I don't think it's, it's not comparable to, what's the, what's?
Michigan Meadows.
It's not comparable. That's a, that's almost an eight hundred thousand dollar building they have there, plus they have more property. So if they want to go to a tribunal, then we better get our ducks in the row and get our numbers straight.
Okay. All right, so we're going to need, we'll need approval for Shelley to put a quote on the, we're getting that appraisal.
I make a motion that we approve Shelley to get up forward for appraisal. Are you good for Michigan Meadows?
Yeah.
Golden Hawk, these are.
Do we have support for that? Okay, motion support to give our assessor, Shelley Baummeister, authority to approve the, to request a quote for the appraisal of Golden Hawk. Any other comments? Okay. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, five yeses, motion carries. Okay, next one is window repair. When they were here tearing out the old branch of the, of the front door, we had our window was damaged on the lunchroom. Dave, our maintenance man, had been in the window business for like forty years. He gave us two options. One, we could replace the entire stash for a cost of five hundred and twenty-two dollars and eleven cents, or he could re-glaze it for a cost of three hundred dollars.
I would have looked at three hundred dollars if that was fixed.
Yeah. So you make a motion? Okay.
Is this something that we're going to talk to the airport, something about?
Yeah.
The campus tag, because I thought that we had, didn't you call him and he said he didn't care.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion for the three hundred dollars to replace the window? Okay, you have any support? You'll support that in the air discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes. Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, five yeses, motion carries. Okay. Garbage receptacle replacement. Can you uh, Jen?
Yes, um, so in those bathrooms and the walls, there's the garbage and the paper towels. When we redid the bathrooms, we didn't think about it. And when they turned them out, they're all rusty and corroded and there's some sharp pieces on there. Um, so we were thinking that we'll get rid of them and just drywall there so that, 'cause we got the paper towel holders and we'll just get like a small garbage container there.
Okay. All right. Do we have the uh, any questions on this? Okay, do you have a motion?
Uh, so moved, so moved.
Okay. And we have support. We have support for um, gum and the garbage receptacle, paper towel dispenser in the upstairs, all bathrooms, solving drywall, mud, sand, fine, we could go all, for a price of two thousand dollars. Any support? Okay, we have motion and support. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kessinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, five yeses, motion carries. Okay, and High Tech, Microsoft three sixty. Jen, take it away.
Yes, well, along with our network computers, we got a um, a contract, a contract for Microsoft three sixty-five, of like a subscription. They will not release it. So, High Tech has to do like a new subscription, so we can add that to our bill of income.
How much is that worth?
Thirteen hundred and fifty. But we kinda have to have it.
Yeah.
I only have to have it, but we'll put that on our list.
Absolutely. And again, it's just, you know...
They won't release it.
Okay. All right. Okay, do we have um, uh, a motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, to um, for the Microsoft three sixty business?
Yes, for High Tech to be paid thirteen fifty.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion support to purchase the Microsoft three sixty business danger. Any question? Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kessinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, five yeses, motion carries. Okay, our unfinished business, three A is to approve cyber insurance. We have two quotes. I'm, they do the same thing, just one is more coverage than the other. One is a hundred thousand dollar limit, the other is two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit. I talked with Jay Saint James. He says a hundred thousand should do it, but he says they're fighting new threats every day. I mean, they're gonna have a lot of protection on our stuff. But um, the, the last page will give you the deductibles there or the premiums each year. We have one uh, for the hundred thousand, the nine thousand, forty-two dollars, and the other one for two hundred and fifty thousand is two thousand eighty-two dollars. But that'll give us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in case if we did hack again, someone makes it through the defenses there. So...
So it's like an eight hundred dollar difference?
Right.
Well, that's the deductible. How much is the cost? It's, the cost is about eight hundred dollars. So the deductible is one thousand for the hundred and twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if they figure out how much, how much we spent getting hacked. I, I don't know. Eight hundred dollars is, is a lot, but isn't, you know what I mean?
I mean, we got hurt bad, you know, good this past spring. I mean, I do want to say as much protection as possible. Bad guys are trying to work their way.
Right. I mean, because when we got hacked, they didn't ask for very, very much, that doesn't mean like if it happened again that they'd be saying...
Absolutely.
Yeah, because that was a amateur hacker.
Right. Next time it might not be, you know. It was an amateur hacker because it was left wide open for someone to get it.
Yes.
So...
Let's get our records protected.
You're making a motion?
Two thousand.
Oh, the two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion support to um, go with the, with the insurance of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit. That's gonna cost us the cost of two thousand eighty-two dollars per year. Okay, roll call, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kessinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, five yeses, motion carries. Yeah, hopefully you guys never get hacked or, I think that was not fun. It was not fun um, at all.
Did you have to pay a ransom?
Yes.
Yeah, it cut in half.
And right now, there's a bill in Lansing to make that illegal for communities to do that. So that's, you know...
To pay the ransom?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you do then? You don't keep your records, do you? And it's curled up all of your records.
So that's why, you know, the higher rate makes sense. Our new IT service, I mean, they're gonna have lots of protection, but they said there's bad guys are trying to find their way through.
And that's everybody's records.
Yeah.
Well, it's like the ass, I mean, the assing stuff went back how many years if we went out that way?
And it's, it's not that, these records are all open to the public. Anybody can call me and ask what your taxes are or your taxes, whatever. It's, it's the idea that if we lose all this information, we have no record of this. I can't go back and tell you what your taxes were last year. I can't get somebody who's calling to get a house appraisal, uh, and they bought it in nineteen ninety-four and they wanna know what the taxes were in nineteen ninety-four, what they paid. That's all gone and wiped out and there's no, no way to replace it unless you pay that ransom.
It's private information too.
Not so, well, there, there might be private information, but I don't keep, I don't keep social security numbers or, not on my tax records.
But don't we keep extensive, multiple backups and all of this information?
We do now, we do now. Well, I always, I always have to put the taxes.
So really, in that respect, we're quite different than we were prior to this.
Yeah. But I, it, it's the, we need, we need to keep track of those records. It's not the, you know, I, it's all public information.
But, you know, we are gonna know, hopefully by the end of summer, we'll have, be able to register the payment using credit card.
Yeah, now that's gonna be dicey.
You know, protect that as much as possible.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah. Even though, yeah, our new service, they're gonna give us multiple layers of protection, but there's bad guys trying to find their way through it. I mean, so... Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, good deal. All right. Approved sale of township lawnmower. I went down to uh, Zimmer's where we bought our lawnmower and they have our file on record. They recommend for our township lawnmower, they have smart code model one through seven dash nine zero four zero for two thousand dollars.
Well, that'll pay for our...
So um, so that's what I think we, it's right now just sitting out in the shed doing nothing, 'cause we have lawn service cutting into township.
Is it in good repair?
Yeah. Well, they, I told them for the usage, it just kind of ran the township all down to cemetery. They said for its age and that, they said two thousand dollars would be a repair process. Very good. Okay. All right, any questions?
No.
Okay.
Oh. I'll make a motion that we, we try and sell that for two thousand dollars. I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion um, and support to sell the township lawnmower for two thousand dollars. Any further questions?
I, I do have a question. How, what are we gonna do to sell it, you know, put it on?
Put it on the township.
Facebook, on the website?
Well, the Facebook.
Township neighbors and friends or whatever. Or, or, we can put it out in the parking lot at the next Casco sale, there you go. Or we could buy it, or you could buy it.
We had a lawnmower at St. Michael's Cemetery there in Richmond, and we did the same thing. We put it out and we sold it to the...
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. It's the next one, from Zimmer's. Yeah. What year is it?
Yeah, we bought it back in twenty seventeen.
You only got this one for dollars?
No. Yeah.
I just bought a lawnmower. But I didn't want a zero term.
Okay, okay, we...
So you have to do a, all in favor?
Yeah, we have um, a motion and support to sell the township lawnmower for two thousand dollars. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, so... All right. Okay, the next one is broadband survey update. Dennis, you're up, sir. Hey, Gavin, we'll get you in our...
I'm good. You have a... Sit down later.
Yo, okay.
Thank you.
Joe, do you prefer me to stand here or?
Yeah. So, what I did from, from last one and where I left you guys was that we're looking at using that Google form to do the survey. What, what came of that, and I have that in the first part here, is that we came to understand that that needed to be done on an account that was controlled by the township. That is, so that it isn't for, for me to have that, because the concern was this, at the end of the survey, when, say I would turn over a USB drive with the electronic information and a hard copy, and then I would tell you guys, Joe, I've erased it from my hard drive on my machine at home. There's no way I can guarantee that it's totally gone off that hard drive. And just what you were just talking about, if somebody hacked into my machine, they could draw that all off too, okay, for what it's worth. So, we've removed the Google form from that, from that uh, process. And what's come now of it is that in Office three sixty-five, you guys do have, or everybody that uses Office three sixty-five, there is a thing that's equivalent to Google forms called Office Forms. It's free. I did verify that this morning. I got a call back from Jay uh, from High Tech, and then he opened a ticket on my behalf with his internal guys, and the guy called me back about five o'clock this afternoon just, just a little while before I came here. And he confirmed that, that in all versions of Office three sixty-five, 'cause I've been speaking with Jay this morning, there was some confusion that, on his part, he thought that there were certain versions of Office three sixty-five that had it, certain versions that didn't, and, and he wasn't sure which version you guys were getting. But the tech, Darryl, said no. Every version of Office three sixty-five has this, it's listed on the side, we open it up, it's pretty much a, a, a easy, easy fix. The contract that you guys have with High Tech does not, uh, does not, or did not allow for them to do a build, if you will, but the guy has assured me, and I've heard this from several other people that are, that are unrelated to us, that it's a very easy thing, like self type, type thing. And, and I would be willing to work with whoever in the township here to try and set that up when the, when the time comes. So that's the first thing. The second thing is I started digging around more to see, are we reinventing the wheel? If somebody else has already done this, why do we need to do it again? So, I went and looked on Merritt, which is used in Michigan New Shot, as well as their internal thing, and I discovered there was a very nice survey in there, had a few more questions, which in my mind might turn people off, maybe in terms of, you know, do I have to answer all this stuff? But the questions were well, well said in terms of, do you have children at home? Are they, are they online schooling? Do you have anybody taking computer courses online? Who's your service provider and that? And then, of course, the actual speed survey that, that's, that's been run. The problem with that was when I tracked down the lady who was, was it the day after whatever, what, we just have Fourth of July? Yeah, after Fourth of July. She was on vacation at her parents' home in Wisconsin, but she called me back. Uh, she's working remote, and she said that they no longer were using that survey, it had been used five years ago when, when Merritt did a survey of the whole eastern half of the UT to determine acceptability and what they could do there. So she said the thing was out there, if you wanted to try to use it, but they're not sure. The data, and that was my concern, was, okay, so what happens to the data? When I hit send and it goes, where does it go? She said it went to something that Merritt has that's called MLabs. I, I don't know what that, what that is, but apparently that, that data is, supposedly would be available. She did indicate too, though, that Merritt, it has not worked at the township level anywhere in Michigan, they've only worked at the county level. They've had prepackaged type system or, or product, if you will, to, to distribute in a survey type manner. It sounded like it was very similar, although we didn't talk at all about pricing, I'm sure there's some pricing that goes with it, but we didn't speak to that. But it sounded very similar to the same thing that we saw from Ray Seines Company in, in terms of, here's a package, it costs as much money, and we can do it if, if you want it type thing. So based on that, I called uh, Dan Manning, who is a Connect Michigan uh, person that, that I know from uh, Sandline County and a little bit further up north. He was in the UT, so it took him three days to get back to me because he didn't have any service. So, his thing was is that he believes that there was a survey run by St. Clair County in twenty twenty, or twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, and that the, all of the results, including whatever for people that, from Casco Township that may have participated, are all on file back at Connect Michigan. He's supposed to be back from the UT next week, and he told me he would look in their files to see what they have on Casco Township and send that over to me. So I'm, I'm looking for...
So potentially, if we go...
Potential, we may, yeah. Potential, we may not have to do anything, we may have uh, what we're looking for already in, in that. Then based, based with that, oh, I'm sorry, Dan, did you?
Um, and this all came up a couple of months ago, I followed around on the internet and I found a whole bunch of data on distribution of broadband service and all through the county and other places. And I believe it was from, more than one site, Sempa has done a tremendous amount of data collection and you might wanna take a look there.
Yep, I did.
It's all there.
It, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. I did, I, I don't remember whether it was Colleen or Joe, one of you guys told me about your, your thing with Sempa. And I went and looked, and what they're doing is they're reproducing the Connect Michigan documentation. Unfortunately, if you, if you look at this township, we're totally covered. Colleen has perfect service at her house, which we know she does not have any service at her house. And, and if we look at Richmond Township, where I used to live back in ninety-two to ninety-nine, at the corner of thirty-three mile road in Low Plank, it's totally covered and, and there's nothing there. Now, Frontier has recently put a fiber gateway on that corner, but they can only go eight hundred feet in each direction from there on twisted area they don't have. So, the, the, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that the mapping is not all it's cracked up to be, and FCC has started a new thing that's supposed to, well, supposed to have started already on June thirtieth, where all the ISPs, as well as all the people that are petitioning for B grants with the states, are required to put in the actual addresses and locations and what the speed is that they're actually delivering for those that. That's supposed to be available late this year, early next year.
There's something else too that I discovered, and that at least Comcast, I had a hotspot and it's very fast and I can put two or three computers just with my mobile phone for the price of a mobile phone. I think there are other services that are available in this area that can do the same. So essentially, you can get, you know, for, you have to get the five G service for the hotspot, and it's fast. I mean, I couldn't believe how fast I download or get YouTube videos and they come on fast and furious. So, there's an option out there that I'm not sure covers the township, but well might, in that cell phone service.
T-Mobile, for instance, does have some wireless feature.
In the total house. I mean, it's probably take, I think, this one, at least five different devices.
I think...
And the, and the cost is really minimal for the cell phone service and, and I wanna make a case. And I want to make a case. Up to a point. I mean, they slow down at a certain point.
Right, right.
There's options out there that I'm not sure everybody knows about yet.
But you're waiting for the gentleman?
I'm waiting for Dan to get in touch with me next week. Or I'll get him down on my chipper files. I figure by Wednesday, if I haven't heard from him, I'll give him a call. Hopefully, his cellphone is working. He's still up in the U.P.
The thing is that this survey that Dennis is talking about, there's grants available through the USDA to install broadband coverage. And these surveys will give, you know, they can use that when they apply. Let's say Casco Township, they get a survey done on the broadband usage from its residents. They can use this thing. Broadband suppliers, like we have Duke Broadband, St. Clair, you can think, and if they get the grant, if they're successful in getting the grant, they'll offset the cost on putting broadband, high-speed broadband through the township. Now, what is the thing? It's 100 up and 100 down.
That's the minimum speed that they have to build to today now. For like, if Duke got another grouping within the township. And relative to that, the bare minimum is 100 slash 20. That is 100 megabits per second down, 20 megabits per second up. I've run the Oklahoma speed test at my house. And I'm fortunate, I have Comcast, for which it's supposed to be 100 and 20. What I get on average is about 87 down and less than 10 up at any time of the day. And I've run it about seven, eight times, different times of the day, different days of the week. What that means is that if, say, as Joe mentioned, Duke Broadband out of St. Clair wants to file on the township, and they can, they can file the paperwork to the state. State of Michigan has to set up a high-speed broadband office, which they're in the process of still staffing. They will get funding from NICA, the National Telecommunications, again, I don't know what the I stands for, Association. And they are going to cut all of the states that have broadband offices, establish $100 million at a chunk, and then leave it up to the state to determine what grants they should make and what grants, and how much of the grant they should make. What they also allow on that is that the incumbents, so around here, it would be Frontier, Comcast, and T-Mobile, probably the big three that might want to be close to being able to protest and say, you can't give Duke any money because we already serviced the area. Well, the problem is if they don't have a minimum 100 slash 20, which none of them currently do have in this township, they can't protest. This is considered to be unserved territory. So that's part of the reason to do the survey, because in the grant, you have to provide the actual information that lists the addressing and what the actual speed was to say, here, see, we're really not served. And therefore, it should be granted to give whoever, if it's Duke or whoever else, give them the grant so they can extend. In Duke's case, they're looking to extend fiber to the home or fiber to the dwelling, whatever we want to say, which is a great, you know, the great service. The other thing that's interesting is that, two years ago, at the start of the pandemic, sorry, at the start of the pandemic, the FCC and the IEEE had done a study. And they said, on average across this country, we had 13 connected items in our home houses. That is PCs, smart TVs, smart thermostats, Ring doorbells and stuff. I don't have 13. I can come up with about six. And so I'm not sure where all that is. But I think it's younger families, people that have the thing, they have more connected devices and more things that they're using. Now, they've just announced that we have, average across the country, again, 18 connected things per house, including refrigerators, washers, dryers, which nobody can figure out why you'd need that connected to the internet, but if they do. The point is, I think that younger people and younger families are looking for that type of service to continue with home, you know, homeschooling, telemedicine at home. As I mentioned last time in here, I think my last thing was, I don't want to be trying to drive to downtown Detroit in February in the middle of a snowstorm because my doctor says, well, come on down here. We need to try to take a look at you and see you. And 20 minutes later, they're like, yeah, you're fine. You can go back home. So now I would much rather sit in front of a screen, have a Zoom, what do they call it, Zoom, call with the doctor to determine, is there something that we can do to make some changes? Do I have to come in? Do I have to come in and see you? Or should we already ignore that part and jump over to see the specifics?
Dennis, the hookup cost didn't, I mean, myself, Colleen, and Dennis, we went there to Duke Broadband back in April for a presentation. And they said, what, the hookup cost for the broadband would be about $300, right?
Right.
Okay. That's far less than a lot of people hook up to.
Right, and a lot of times, what they're doing as well, I know like up in the thumb at the Valley and Thumb Electric, which is going like mad over Tuscola County. Once they hit your road, as they're starting to put the fiber down, and if you'll sign up there at that point, they either knock it down to 50 bucks or they cancel the whole install cost at that point. Now, if you call after they've already gone down the road and it's back up to, what is it, $150 to $300 for install, it's still, that's not too bad. When you look at Starlink, which is Elon Musk's system of satellites that they're putting, he wants to put around the world and thing. The average there is $700 for the install and about $150 a month. I did have a friend, or I do have a friend, who has a place up north around Hillman. And he would need a 50-foot tower for another $3,500 in order to get it, so he could see the satellite. Anyway, that's about where I'm at. The other thing is that I just need to look at the forms again on Office 365. And I think I'm just about in the section, once I can get the information from Dan Manning, and I also sent an email up to Pete, can't pronounce his name. Klomp, Klomp Parents? K-L-O-M-P-A-R-D-N, P-A-R-D-N, from St. Clair County. He's part of the Metropolitan Planning Group up there. Dan had suggested that he was working with him and that he may have some information again about this survey that was done 2020, 2021.
Okay.
And then I believe I'll be able to give you the proposal type thing.
Okay, great deal. All right, good job there.
That's where I'm at. Any questions, concerns?
Yeah, Dennis, you're doing far cheaper than the other ones.
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying. You know, I have one question in general for you guys. And I need to go because I gotta go pick up my daughter right now. I work. It has nothing to do with this per se. I've only lived here for 22 years in the township. Where's the cemetery?
It's in here, it's right on Palm Troy.
See, many people don't even know.
Yeah.
We're getting some.
Yeah. At the corner of Eier, Palms and Eier Road.
We're in the town road.
No, yeah, we will.
I only ask because I had seen the cemetery over in Bell River. And there's some very old, you know, stone in there. I'm just amazed that some of the etching on the thing. I would've stayed longer, but there were too many mosquitoes.
Right. All right, thanks, Dennis.
Thank you very much.
You too, thank you. Okay. Through discussion on building fees, Brenda and Roland.
Yeah, do you want to come up there?
Yeah, come up there where Dennis was.
Do you want to look up around there?
No, no, I'm just... Oh, that's great. Great, isn't it? Great to the audience.
First of all, I realize I don't think I approached this in the right way when I asked if they'll permit fees. It was not my intention that it would not have discrepancy on those types of things. And it was all that I didn't have discrepancy, that was the cross point. So I apologize for my mistake on that. And I did do some checking after that. And after about six other phone calls with different answers on every phone call.
You gotta love this guy.
We're looking at what we threw up the other day, Brenda and I.
You gotta love the state of Michigan, huh?
No, it's all over. No matter whether it's the state of Michigan or a township, the weather might be. You know, like I told you, I gave you those textures out of the code book. As you can see, there's a lot of gray areas. And a lot of this, that, and the other thing. And this is what I've always had the premise of doing, working off of that code book. I never dreamed that I wouldn't be able to execute that without having some discretion for a little lady that's 80 years old that's trying to put something in or hardships or whatever. And this, and I apologize, I did that all wrong.
Okay.
But this is kind of what we drew up this guy.
Okay, so construction to begin without a permit. Let's say you begin, you would be a $75 fee in addition to all of the applicable building fees for permits.
Right.
Okay. For permits with requested extensions prior to permit expiration, that, you know, they say, hey, they're going to need longer time, a $75 fee with extensions at the building office discretion and no administration fee applicable. Okay, meaning that they don't have to pull another permit?
No.
Okay.
Not that they...
Okay, and then you have for expired permits with no extension, $75 fee in addition to any fees for inspections not conducted under the original date of issuance and no administrative fee applicable. You mean they wouldn't have to pull another permit or...
You want the last one?
Yeah.
Yeah, they had to pull another permit.
Okay, they would have to pull another permit then.
Is that right?
No, no. The original issuance will continue. And they'll pay a $75 fee. And for instance, on the original permit, if it required three inspections and only one of those three was conducted, they would pay the $75 plus two inspections at $75 each. So it'd be a $150 for the inspection they didn't, never had done under the original issuance date and the $75 charge.
Okay.
What kind of paperwork is involved in that?
Well, there'll be no permit issued. That's why in our discussions, we thought it wouldn't really be applicable to charge them a $125 administration fee because that's for our work for...
So you're not putting any time into that? The building department has you or...
Basically, just receipts. We're taking in the $75 and then whatever applicable inspections that will be required. So basically, be a receipt. There'll be the original, like, the one gentleman we're dealing with, would be on this fifth building permit. In this instance, he would only have issued one. So that permit number continues on. So there's no actual new permit being issued. So I guess it would be at the discretion of the board whether or not you would want the administration fee to be applicable. But it was our thought that in an attempt to be fair, it would not necessarily, you know, we would not necessarily need it. But that really is to whatever you and Roland would ultimately decide. It makes no difference.
I just wondered how much.
There'll be no revoke and reissue. It's going to be the original permit number with that additional $75. In this one gentleman's instance, he would have the $75 plus 10 inspections that were not conducted. So he would have a $750 charge plus the 75 under that original permit.
All right, is that what you want?
That's what would probably work.
Okay. And you, Dan, Roland did a lot of research, call around various inspectors. God knows the state of Michigan should give guidance on.
Because the other situation here is, we've got, I looked today, there's probably four, five that are way out there.
Okay.
Way up. No extensions, no nothing. The ped letters and so on.
Well, but we do have...
This probably should be addressed.
Do you take the $75?
Okay. Okay, all right. What's the board's? Any questions for that? So this will, if we adopt this, this will rescind the double fees for the start of construction without a permit that we voted on last month. This would replace it.
You have to really tell me how you got along with this motion because I don't want to miss out.
Rescinded.
Well, I guess whoever makes the motion said this new fee schedule that the...
So rescinding that all?
Yeah, rescinding the one we did last month and replacing it.
Replacing it with this. And can you just use the form that we have here from Roland? Or that just says all the fees in construction and use this? You can use the date, the request dated June 12. This is, yes, as this request begins on June 12 and rescinds the one prior May, in May.
It means July.
Oh, yeah, July 12. And replaces previous.
Yeah.
With this, a $75 fee add on along with whatever.
So for construction, you're going to have to obtain a building permit, a $75 fee in addition to all applicable fees per building permit fee schedule.
Right, whatever balance would be, that's what depends on how long. Yeah, the only difference would be the $75.
And so the second part of it is for permits with requested extensions prior to permit expiration, $75 fee with extensions at building officials discretion? Is that what you want? And no administration fee applicable? And for permits, or expired permits with no extension, $75 fee in addition to any fees for inspections not conducted under the original date of issuance and no administration fee applicable?
Do we have any support for that?
I have a question from Brenda. So that one that you were talking about that had the 10 inspections, what, like, what would they normally say? Like, if this person came in and asked you?
Well, the bond, in this particular instance, has carried over for four years. So initially, there's the bond fee, $1,230 for administration fee bond, and then $75 for each inspection as...
When, okay, so under how it is right now, before this one, how we approved it last month, what would this person pay?
His inspection would each be $150.
Okay.
The administration fee would be 200. Oh, yes. Yes, it would be about $1,400 just for the inspections.
So last month, the thing we approved last month.
Double it with administration fee.
Right.
This is a little bit more.
Yeah, and you put a last old man June 14, that's...
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I misstated this. It shouldn't be a date of July.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have support for this.
I'll support you.
Okay, we have a motion support to readjust the thing. Okay, so we'll do a roll call. I'm not going to repeat the motion, it's a mouthful there. Whatever's recorded, so roll call vote.
Sanders, yes. Stevens, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Silver, yes.
Okay, good. Roland, Brenda, thank you.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, Roland, you guys... All right, Roland, you guys do a good job for Tennessee United. You guys are right across the line, you can't be so good. Okay, Park update. We're really close, Pam and her partner finalizing the plans. They're about 98% complete. Once they are totally complete, they're going to submit the DNR for final approval. They said it doesn't take long. Once that's done, we're going to be in the position to start hiring contractors, so we're going to... Yeah, and Pam, she's done a lot of projects in the area, she knows the contractors out there. But we have to put out for bid, there's guidelines on that. And we get that underway, so hopefully by late summer, it's possible. And I also want to get the lady who was supposed to be here tonight, from Consumers Energy, to do a cleanup down there in like September timeframe to help, because there's a lot of crap down there from the previous owner. And I want to clean up, run a couple dumpsters, get one for scrap steel and one for trash. A lot of scrap steel. But we can start developing a park, and like Nancy Windsor was here, if you get money to pay the driveways and parking lot, I'm going to go over there. Any questions? Okay. Next, the citizens coming, Jeff White from Richmond EMS is currently in the firm. You want to brief us, Jeff?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Can I start with how nice it is to be back out? I'll try to be brief, and I, I used to try to get used quite often, there's new faces on the board. There'll be a couple new faces in the audience, new supervisors since the last time I was here.
Yeah.
COVID kept me and our organization quite busy.
How do you like our role?
For the last couple of years, we did about 16,000 vaccines. We're still providing the monoclonal antibody treatments today for people suffering from COVID. We've done about 300 of those to date, on top of the increasing call volume that COVID caused. So I was still working very hard for you, we just wasn't able to make it out to all the public meetings, so some of that time period. So it's good, it's good to be back. I see a fresh face in the township, Paul, even here.
Yeah, that was good.
So, I want to talk to you tonight, it's not so much, I send out still a regular report on the EMS. That goes to the board, there hasn't been significant change there, I've been ever increasing call line in your community and all the communities around us, as additional people move in, as pandemics move through. As all these things occur, we see more and more calls of EMS. I do want to come out tonight, real quickly, and some of you just made the old news, and as much as a lot of people vote absentee these days, but others of you may be still looking at your ballots and or planning to vote on a second. But on the, on the count, on the ballot, the township has sent out, some of you probably have noticed that there is a countywide EMS tax on that ballot. Many, many years ago, the county used to subsidize some of the cost of ambulance services in St. Clair County. I think Mr. Stevens actually sat on the ambulance authority board.
I did.
And they used some county general funds in those days to subsidize some of our operations. For, for most of the last, probably 15 or 20 years now, going back, Joey, I think, you know, the ambulance services in the county have operated with no, no tax subsidy whatsoever coming in from the county. That was working out reasonably well for a period of time, frankly. We were able to cover our costs based on the ability to bill certain insurances and, and things like that for patients. What's occurred in the last few years, there was, there was a couple of things. One, there was this whole pandemic, and some of the rising costs that that's caused. And, and also, there became, during that same time period, a dramatic decrease in the number of paramedics available in the, in the communities, people educated as people to do paramedics with. And so the average cost of employing these people shot up dramatically. I'll give you an example. So, a paramedic that comes to your house that works for my organization starts, my organization, about $62,000. That same paramedic can go about 25 minutes down the road and make about $68,000 to $69,000. In urban areas, more urban areas, they can pay the paramedics a little bit better because they take more calls. In our area, we have less calls, but we still want the paramedics to be available within a certain period of time when we do have an emergency. And so because we don't have the insurance dollars coming in, and our paramedics can go 20, 25 minutes down the road and make $6,000 or $7,000 more dollars a year, we're having trouble keeping people here. And it's not only my organization, but it's the tri-hospital EMS, and, and for hereon, it's Maryville Fire Department. Those are the three people, the three departments that provide ambulance service in this county. And we just can't find a key. Couple that with, you know, increasing gas prices, which we're all feeling. And something that just shocked me only recently, was that just pre-COVID, we had ordered two new ambulances, two new vehicles. We still don't have them because of the manufacturing delays on the vehicles. So we've only waited 24 months to get two trucks. So not bad enough they have to wait 24 months for them, they still can't get them. But we just ordered a third once, we can get in line, so we can keep new vehicles coming in this week. When COVID began, I bought those two new trucks for about $210,000. That's a lot of money, right? Until I ordered this last one about a week ago for $285,000.
Wow.
No difference in the ambulance, same blueprint handed across the table to a building. Same truck, we didn't put anything fancy in it, we didn't ask, add any new equipment. And that doesn't include the vacation equipment on the back of the vehicle. So, so this is what we're kind of up against right now. I, I will tell you that this isn't, my job is, is here, is, is only allowed to educate. So I'm educating you as to what are, what we're up against right now with EMS. I can tell you that for, for our organization, for Richmond Lennox, I'll only speak for us now, not the others, not my other partners in the county. I can tell you, you know, we intend to use these funds for a couple of things. One will be to increase the wages of our staff, to make certain we're competitive, and keep the people working here for us in our community. And the other thing that, that I've always believed in, we do this now in Richmond Lennox Township, where, that own the EMS, where there are taxes paid to help cover the cost of the service, is with those tax dollars, the other thing that we're able to do, is waive the copayment for people who use the ambulance service. So in other words, if you get a, if you use an ambulance in Casco Township, you have a copayment on your insurance, we still bill you for that. If you're in Richmond Township, who pays tax for the EMS, and you get ambulance service, we take your insurance as full payment. If this tax passes in St. Clair County, and it's been voted on countywide, so it's not just here in your community, we will be waiving that copayment. It's always disturbed me to think that somebody might have to look in their wallet before they call nine. This tax that passed will prevent us from ever having to do that again, at least in the four St. Clair County communities. So at least our new folks, Columbus and Riley Williams.
What mileage rate are you asking?
It's half a mil.
Half a mil?
Yeah, that, that's why I was talking to your kids in the commies, they're tri-hospital. And we're the only, the only county in the state that currently does, you know, was a, for paying a pain when the ambulance comes. Their, their virtue is they, they're at the point where they may have to cut certain, like, weather stations in El Cajet, the western part of the county. They don't want to do that, they want to serve your area. So this is a smart thing, to get this EMS mileage there, like Jeff says, to keep qualified people and our other partners there, so they can keep a station, they don't have to come. Yeah, there's some people that you probably find it's obvious, they're paying their bills. And that's, you know, that cost is still there, and...
We see more and more, the other costs, we see more and more of, and we want to be here to do this. We're not trying to get out of any work. We, we, we will do everything we can to not close anything down, in other, we're not here to tell you we're, we're going to have to close things down, we're not here to tell you it's going to be really hard to find people, you know, that kind of thing, that is, is what are my case problems. But, but when you talk about unpaid bills, we probably respond at least once a day, but I would say more often twice a day, within all the calls that we do. We're people anymore, because we're all, thank goodness, we're all living a little longer. We have a little better quality of life later in age. But we get a lot more people who do things like slip and fall at home, or they just need some help getting from a chair to a bad active surgery. We will always be here to do those things. We won't be cutting any of that back, no matter what happens here, not as, not as long as I'm around, because that's part of what we do. But that comes for no pay. So when you're running an ambulance out there that gets about four miles to the gallon, at $5, you know, or $6 for diesel fuel a gallon, that, that running out there for, for, for nothing starts to get expensive, and, and those are things that this will help us overcome. So, so like I say, I'm a government employee, I cannot tell you about yes or no. I can simply tell you, this is what your local EMS will use the dollars for if... Thank you, I know you've had a long meeting, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but...
Okay, informative as always.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we have a second citizen comment, so does anyone want to ask any questions?
Yeah. They still, they still use the major cemetery?
Yeah. We're going to have an tournament next week.
My dad used to dig the graves there.
Oh, really?
Really?
Oh, yeah.
He worked for the, yeah, by hand.
Okay. Well, they have backhoes now, I mean, if it's a full burial, if it's a, if it's a crevin, we just have postal there. You know, so, yeah, so... Yeah, I'm going to, I have something. Sure.
We forgot to put board comments on here, but I just have a comment. I just want to, from the clerk's office. We had to send out new voter ID cards to every registered voter in our township because the state changed the districts. Those are more just for your information, so you can see which school district you're in, who your, you know, representative is. And you don't need to bring those with you to vote, kind of if you want to, but you don't need to. And we also are sending out absentee ballots. We have samples in the clerk's office. What else?
The last day to register to vote online is the 18th. Just so you're aware of that. Otherwise, you do have to come in person, you have a photo ID to, 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 yeah.
Absentee ballots should be back to us by Monday, the Monday before the election, the day before the election. We're going to be open Saturday.
See, I have a request one after 10:00 AM on Monday before, you can kind of bring it in.
Yeah, you can bring it in. Yeah. We're open Saturday before the election, which is the 30th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So if anybody, 4:00 PM, 1:00 PM. 4:00 PM, sorry, sorry. So if anybody needs anything, and I think we're going to, we haven't decided what days, but we're going to probably come in later, in a couple of days. It'd be like the Cyberjail State, when they're open from 11:00 to 7:00, or whatever, because I know a lot of people work and they can't get up here, so we're going to probably do that in a couple of days. So...
Okay, all right. I had a meeting, okay, with Dan Casey from the Economic Development Authority Office. He was here back, what, two, three months ago. And he talked about a thing about financing a water line up to the proposed truck terminal there at Conley Line in Swingboring Lane. And he was talking about financing it through bonds, and he was, I'll have more on it. I told him I don't want nothing to affect the general fund, he says this won't. And it should pay for itself in seven to nine years. But I'm going to gather more facts about it, bring it to the board in August. This truck terminal, they want to, they want to move forward, but yet, I told him, this is a big step for the township. I don't want to rush something, if we're going to do something, do it right. I'm going to do something in Casco Township, not great like structure. I mean, that's who we work with. And what I find curious, they haven't bought the property yet.
They're waiting on the water line.
Yeah, if, if they're so concerned, why don't they buy the property straight off the market? They could always sell it later. And that, that's what I find curious about this, so... But I will be, I'm going to go meet with Dan and look into this, and in, in August, bring it back to the board to brief the board. But I want to do what's best for Casco Township first and foremost. Not something that's going to be a liability on the township for a green. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, okay, we're up to it.
Motion to adjourn, 8:46.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, any support?
Support.
We have support, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the mayor's done.
I have to call the township election commission meeting to order at 8:48.
Okay.
First thing we need to do is approve the consent agenda, which consists of the agenda for today, which I do have one little addition, which we wrote on here, we're adding in another election inspector, John Westphal.
Okay, I make a motion to approve.
Yeah, you can take off, she's going to just tell you.
Okay, I'll take that one.
Take care, Dan.
All right, and, bye, Dad. Minutes from last month.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the amendments to the, the new business.
Can we have motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes, one motion carries. First thing, a new business, we need to approve the election inspectors as follows. Anna Marie Bernard, Deborah Esper, Tracy Grant, Katie Holt, Shannon Holt, Galen Schneider, Kara Aldridge, Carol Minnie, Peter La Boya, Angela Del Maki, Michelle Palmer, Douglas Brown, Jennifer Brennan, Dustin Turner, and John Westphal.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the election inspectors as just previously listed.
Motion support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we need to approve the election chairperson as Katie Holt, Anna Marie Bernard, and Tracy Grant.
I make a motion to approve the election chairpersons of Katie Holt, Anna Marie Bernard, and Tracy Grant.
Support.
Good motion support, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Last thing we need to do is approve the receiving board as Katie Holt, Anna Marie Bernard, and Tracy Grant, and Deborah Esper.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the receiving board of Katie Holt, Anna Marie Bernard, Tracy Grant, and Deborah Esper.
Support.
Motion support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See, the motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.